Call me to order tonight. First thing I'd like to do is have the flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and consider it public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also like to remind everybody that has turned their pagers off, they don't vibrate so we don't have any interference of that again. First thing to do, have roll call for the new year.
Jan Wicker present.
Krieta Pittcock present.
Jean Gaver present.
Rex Snyder present. Nathan Albrecht is absent tonight, so I will be doing the business meeting for us tonight. First thing, we don't have any guests, do we?
No, they didn't have anything for us, so I'd already had them printed out.
Okay. Next thing, the agenda is the minutes and adjustments. Have everybody looked over the minutes and adjustments? Any questions?
No. Motion to approve the minutes and adjustments from December.
We have a motion for, second by Danny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, I guess we'll go to the police report, and since we don't have an officer, we have it here in our minutes or notes. For the month of December, we had abandoned vehicles, one, animal problems, one, business check, two, fire, one, handicap parking complaint, one, intoxicated person, two, investigation burglary residential, one, investigations, four, peace officer detail, one, search warrant, one, speak of officer, two, special patrol, two, suspicious vehicle, or excuse, suspicious person, one, suspicious vehicle, three, traffic stops, three, vacant house check, one, VIN check, one, wanted person, two, welfare check, one. Total called thirty-one for the month of December. Excellent agenda. Fire report.
For December twenty twenty-four, zero ALS runs, hundred twenty-six BLS runs, zero first responder runs of three, two fire runs, one power line sparking, and one assist to Milton on a possible structure fire, and use zero water.
Very good. Any questions for the fire department, we have the personnel here. Okay, thank you, sir. Is that okay? Yes, okay, all right. Next is billing permit, Commissioner?
Yes, we have two. I'm only showing one now. Roof and interior repair at one forty-five North Center. And the other one was yours. Yeah, yeah, I don't have it listed on the first.
Oh, it's not on that page?
Uh-uh.
Okay. What was it for?
Place in broken.
And that's it.
Okay. Anything else on the business side or billing side we should know?
No.
All right. We're gonna go to the superintendent report.
The reports. We also have some flyers on new bucket trucks, or used bucket trucks. And we're still, I'm still gonna take some time and get more information on these things and see what we can come up with, so.
All right. I mean, are these far away where the kids can't go to them and look at them and try them out?
Some of them, some of them are, some of them are in, some of them are far away, and some of them is like in Illinois, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's only a few around here in this area that, and they're, one in, I think I seen one in Fort Wayne, and that was on the El Tech side, so.
I know we can't afford a new one, but it'd be nice if we can get a used one down for you to try out to see exactly what you want and make sure it's gonna work in our situation. Not one day truck is too big or too small.
Right, right. And that's, and that's the thing, we're, we're looking toward, we're looking toward like the forty, the four EMs, and they also have to have a material handler on those as well to be able to pull the tops off these lights, so we don't have to have another bucket truck to help us take those down. And if we can stay away from the, the diesels after, you know, the newer ones where we don't have to mess with that death flood, so.
Yeah.
I'd like to do that as well, so.
We need to check into that, because I, you know, running a gas motor for a long time is not good on a gas motor, hardly no time, but, you know, diesel's supposed to be better, but then you got that, that.
Well, the, the problem is, is a lot of these trucks with the, I know the Fords especially have a lot of issues with the death flood, so, and they're, they have to do deletes, and it winds up costing them a lot of money to fix them, and it's just, they're just a nightmare, so, if we can stay away from that, I'd like to.
As far as trying some out, just to get a feel and see if there's something that you like, you might see if Info will let you go and drive around some of theirs and see what, what they have, and if there's something, yeah, I like this, but I don't like this, and that'll kind of help you.
They can choose what we want, you know. I know we, we want a newer truck, but, you know, anything ten and newer is gonna have a death flood, so, as far as diesels, so. You know, maybe the newer newer ones probably they don't have so much trouble with, but I know the sixteen, seventeens, fifteens and back, they had quite a bit of trouble out of them, so.
All right. Any other questions about, about the truck or anything else? As far as your streets, you did real good on the streets, and then the alleys could have been a little bigger. Some of your intersections need to be widened up. They're kind of tight in some places and stuff, so you might go out and check those, you know, when you get time to ride around and check. I had a thing for the time clock, our part-time help, I like to see you put what they did that day on there, where, you know, like cemetery or snow or whatever on, on there, so we know what to, our person, our part-time guy, what he's doing.
Right.
Ryan, make it a little easier for us and you, I appreciate that. Okay, do you have anything else to add? Do I have any questions for the superintendent? Okay, we'll go to the next one. Talk to the clerk.
Aye.
Aye.
You have your regular reports, fuel and, and the time cards. I did get the official budget order, so everything that we had submitted has been officially approved with no changes on our budget order for the twenty twenty-five year. And we are going to work with Wayne County on the Wayne County, countywide strategic planning, may see if anybody has spare time to volunteer to be on committees or what have you. Basically, our, we have a comprehensive plan, it's over five years old. This will incorporate, update things within our community that the council and the towns' people would like to see improved or added to our community. And then they are going to, the county is going to put all this together for all the communities within Wayne County, and then they can help us find funding. They are not going to apply for anything and get grants this time like we did last time. It'll be on us, but if they see something that we're looking for, maybe us in Cambridge or somebody is, and they see funding out there, they can go, hey, this is something that you might want to look into and help us find some funding for our projects. So I think it'll be beneficial for us, plus, like I said, it will update our, our comprehensive plan, so if we do apply for anything, then we, we have that going in our favor.
So do we need to do anything by, you know, face it, let you learn about it today?
I, I've notified them, I talked to Nathan, and he wasn't so sure whether we wanted to do this, but we were looking in our, I went through our comprehensive plan, and yeah, now I have to have my memory worked. And, you know, some of the things, we still had some things down at the park that we wanted to do, the ADA compliance on our sidewalks, and we're, we're getting the rest of our sidewalks and everything taken care of. What else was there? I'm sorry, I don't remember, but.
I can't remember.
Yeah. But going through all of that, so there are, there are still things in our comprehensive plan that we have not been able to get. When we did the original one, we actually went out to the public and, and we had meetings here, meetings at the library, we sent out road questionnaires to get people's input, so these are things that the people in the community were interested in. So hopefully, we can.
Maybe we can do something like that again, get some other inquiries and stuff.
And they prob, I believe they will as part of this, yes.
Joel, Dad's here.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, I think everything else is actually on the.
Before we actually skip over, you need like officers, your personnel.
Oh, we did it last, we did it last month.
Oh, you did it in December for this year?
We did it in December for this year, yes.
Oh, okay.
Do I have to swear them in? Do I have to swear at them, or?
Sure.
I just, I still have to swear at them?
Yeah, if you have to do it, that's probably.
Okay, okay, we're good. Yes, we did that, tried to make it easier for January, we did that last month.
It's not like the statute comes forth, but that's.
Okay, I mean, it was stated for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, we didn't.
It just says at the beginning of the term. At the beginning of the term, and the term starts in January first, now, of course, you had the same people carry over, so.
Yes, that's, that's the only reason.
That began.
We didn't, we could do it, okay.
I must have a microphone, because I was over late last month, so it was.
Yep, that was one of the first things we did.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay. Any more on your foot side, other than public transportation?
Uh, no.
Okay. So we do all business? Anybody have anything? Okay, let's go to new business. First thing we're gonna talk about, delivery construction for tower maintenance. Julia sent that to me, and I have just a couple questions on it for clarification, maybe one you would know. It talks about it being a one-year contract, a one-year news for ten consecutive years unless the town provides sixty days prior written notice at the end of that time. I don't know if, sometimes you have to be careful on that, if you miss that next sixty day period, it's gonna automatically roll over every year, and so sometimes I've had people just take that completely out. But more importantly, later on in this contract, it talks about it being done, for example, it'll, they'll wash out and coat the system thoroughly inspected no less than three times during the contract period. Are they referring to the one-year term contract period or the ten years?
The ten year.
That's what I, I'll bet you it is, and like, the exterior will be pressure washed and overcoated no less than one time during the contract period. Well, if that's the ten years, and it kind of's inconsistent with it being a one year at a time, what happens if you don't want them anymore and you cancel it, then you're never gonna get that done? And so that would be a concern, so I don't know how we adjust that, because I'm not sure you really want to agree to a ten-year term, because you're also paying eleven thousand eight hundred eighty dollars per year, and I can see for the years that they do that, it would be a justifiable amount, but are they gonna change the annual amount each year? It, it just doesn't address the different work that's gonna be done, and it also doesn't say when you pay that, are you gonna pay that eleven thousand eight eighty immediately, even though they haven't done anything during the first year? It never tells when that payment is due, and you always hate paying something upfront before work is performed. So have, have you, I assume, done, used these people before?
We have, we've always.
Every year?
Yes.
Do they bring this to you every year?
They've always given us a ten-year contract, and within that, the price stays the same over the ten years, but within that, within that ten years, they do so many things, they have certain things, they have testing, they go in and inspect the inside and the outside to make sure everything is good, if it needs.
Resealed or.
Resealed or anything, they take care of that, but then they have, like, at three years, they do, last time, they, they did give us a timeline, this time, they did not, and we can ask for that, but I know they, they paint the outside one time within that ten years.
Or do they keep this price good for the whole ten years?
Yes, it's for the whole, yes, we pay that annually at the end of the year.
It doesn't say pay it both, so you don't have to pay upfront before they do the work.
No, we pay, they, they bill me at the end of each year.
We need to talk to them, because they used to come once a year and inspect the tower.
Okay.
They're still doing that.
They still doing it?
Yeah.
The way the paper here, they don't do that once a year, they just gonna do it once every.
They still do that, because I, I have inspections for the last three years.
Okay.
It said. The first year they. No less than eight inspections will be provided during the tenure.
Okay. It says every, an effort will be made to complete the inspection annually, but no less than eight inspections. I mean, it almost sounds like it really is a ten-year contract, I mean.
It always has been in the past, so I don't understand the one year.
Yeah. I mean, I, I could almost live better with it being a ten-year contract, because right now, they arguably could change the price on you, even though they haven't done one of the things that they're gonna be doing just three times during the whole ten years. So if, if you, if you trust them, but I guess, it's interesting that they do it for ten years, but then you renew it every year.
Yeah.
Which makes it sound like it is just a one-year contract, but if they're, do you know how far you are into the original? I mean, almost like it keeps rolling out, each year you do it, then you just keep adding more years to the whole thing.
Here's the schedule that they did last time, of that, of what they did, work schedule.
I'd like to see something in the contract where they clean up the mess once we're done, while everyone's renewed it's on. A lot of times they leave a mess. This does show different numbers depending on what they.
They cleaned up quite a bit this last.
Three thousand and eleven, eleven, twelve, and a twelve.
But that's not what they charge us.
Who do they charge that to?
They, they take all that and divide it out, because I only pay this, I pay a nine thousand something every month.
Nine thousand every month?
Or every year, once a year.
Well, now that you realize it's eleven thousand.
But that contract was made in twenty fourteen, our last one, through twenty twenty-four, so we didn't have one.
So you have not had.
Or twenty twenty-three, we didn't have one in twenty-four.
So this is the first time they've given it to you since two thousand and fourteen?
That might be what that first one is for, is one year because of what they did. They did inspect it this year, didn't they?
Yes.
That, that may be what the one year is for, and they just didn't word it right, and then it's a ten-year after that one year? Maybe, I don't know.
I just don't want the town to get stuck.
Yes.
Something you don't really want. And Brad, did you say you want something else added about the cleanup? I like to see something where they clean up after we're done, I mean, they leave for the town employees to clean up. Do you want me to call this guy and try to clean it up some, or, I mean, assuming they're not, will they be doing anything to it in the next month while we're doing?
No.
I think it makes sense to clean it up a little bit.
Yeah.
And maybe Lenny and I can be on the phone together with him. Do you talk to this Mr. Larry directly, or?
Yeah, yeah, I've talked to him several times.
It's not that we don't trust him, but lawyers just like things clean, so.
Yeah. And, and I, you know, I know things change, so.
Yeah, are you, I mean, do, I guess, what do we try to strive to get? Do you want a full, a ten-year contract that locks in this amount per year, and so it doesn't go up when they do, you know, those three times that they do the full washout, that it doesn't, you don't get charged more that year, and that they will lock in this price for ten years? Or do you want it to be one year at a time, so you can get out at the end of any one year if they're not doing their work properly?
It's still, doesn't it still say something about a so many month notice or so many day notice in case?
Yeah, it, it automatically rolls over, but you have the out at, at the end of every year, if you give sixty days notice.
Right.
So like, if by what would be November the first, you could get out and say, we don't want this contract anymore. You could do that every November first. If you miss that November first, you're automatically bound by it for another year. But that's what makes it a year-to-year contract. But with it being a year-to-year contract, also means they can, they could legally change the amount on you, because right now, all that's being done is a one-year amount good for twenty twenty-five, they could arguably change in twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven, and it, for those years that they do the washout, they may say, well, this year it's gonna be like thirty thousand, because I see, well, back in two thousand and four, they tried, if, if this is, I don't know what those numbers are, this is just a sheet, was this from them, or?
But the way I read, under the eleven brand, the way they state it, to me, makes it sound like it's not gonna change. Per year for ten consecutive years, said contract period defined period. That's, to me, that says they're not gonna change the price.
You would hope so. But because at the very beginning, on the first page, this shall, this shall commence upon the initial payment for a one-year term, and shall annually renew for ten consecutive years unless the city provides notice.
So did the last one, did, did we actually have to sign a contract every year, or was it just that one?
One, one ten-year.
And how do they ever get? What was, how did they get, so you're, you don't think you really paid this thirty thousand?
I think they broke it down over, over the ten years, the total cost, and, and broke it down over the ten years. Because my cost was, you know, my last, my last few that I've done were like nine thousand nine hundred and some. I'll have to, I can go look.
Because this is just a quote, are they gonna give us next, once we approve this quote, will we get the ten-year contract to sign?
I would guess this is the contract. Yeah, it says, "Above, properly endorsed, this acceptance is a binding contract on both parties." Do you want Bob to check it over and then kind of find print a little bit where it sounds better to us to?
Sure.
And I think if you can go back in your record and see if you really, because I don't know, if this came from them, I would have thought they would have put the right numbers down.
And we probably want that new schedule, right?
Yes, I do want a new schedule.
Yeah, a new schedule, too.
Okay.
So I like to me, what you really do want is a ten-year contract with a schedule, and shows exactly payment per year, if it is this eleven thousand per year, if it's not, then what are they gonna charge you for that particular year? And maybe even with that, still, even though it's a ten-year contract, have early outs, kind of like we had on the old Big D, that talks about if things, if you don't feel like they're doing it properly, you can get out at the end of each year, even though it's a ten-year contract. So I think we can clean it up some.
Okay.
And for the year cleanup. Yeah, clean, clean it up there a little better, they always leave a mess for the town employees cleaning it up.
I know, last, they did that one, the last one that, when they, when we had to run the house consistently was.
Yeah.
It was twenty-two, that's when they shut, that's when they shut the tower.
August of twenty-two?
Yeah. Yeah, that's when they shut the tower down, and that's, if, if that big charge that you're talking about, if they charged us that, that's when they probably would have done that.
So I would just table that until we get some cleaning done.
Okay.
Okay, next, the only agenda would be the radar speed quote for signing.
I spoke with Sheri, since Cambridge has new, their new signs, and Milton has theirs. The first one, let me find it, and it's not something we need right away, I just went ahead and got, got quotes. The Elon City, however you say that, that's who put up, or who Cambridge got theirs through. Their, Cambridge is satisfied with theirs, and theirs was actually the lowest price, it's crazy. Because one was eighty-one hundred, one was twelve thousand, one was eleven thousand, and theirs was sixty-eight hundred. And I asked all of them to give us the, the same display size, and everything else like was on this one for their quotes. But I know in the past, especially on the west end of town, we had a lot of people that had concerns when the dollar store went in and how fast people come in, so I just wanted you guys to have this. Like I said, it's not something we need to act on tonight, but just so we.
And I think being on Florida, Cambridge would get approval from.
We, yes, we would still have to get approval from NDOT for that.
So one on each side of forty, is that?
One coming in, and, yeah.
Right.
On each side, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought when we first started talking like this, you'd said something about that the county had some that could just set up and would use.
They didn't have any, they've been doing, they were doing so much construction that they were using all of theirs, and I think we spoke with, who did you speak with?
Sharp, Mike Sharp?
Yeah, Mike.
And they didn't have anything for us. Yeah.
Can you reach out again?
Okay.
Can they use those on straight highway, though?
They can't, I don't think we can use them on the state, we can use them on the county coming in.
Yeah.
But the county ones, we would still have to.
Okay.
Do something different on the state, if I remember right. We'll check into that.
Do they have a rental program somewhere that you can just rent? You know, you just try them out.
Well, those part-time, those, those ones on wheels, that way you can move them wherever you want them, but, yeah.
I want to see the paper there, I want to find out. All right, we're gonna table that for next time. Next agenda is the Rumke consent assignment.
For those of you who are not aware and have not seen who is picking your trash up, Rumke has purchased Big V Waste and has taken over all of their clientele, so they are picking up our trash, honoring our existing contract and prices at this point in time, so there will be no change, except hopefully, better service. But that's where we're at, and this is just a consent to accept them as our solid waste provider. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, that's right.
You're saying it correctly?
Basically, this is just allowing the transfer of that contract from Big V over to Rumke, and so then you just continue to remain bound by it, and they remain bound by it, so they stand in the shoes of Big V. And the only thing that I picked, and this is maybe being overly cautious, is they have the sentence on here, it's agreed that the. the sentence on here, it's agreed that the terms of the current contract assigned to Rumpke shall be December 19th, 2024, and continue through May 31st, 2026. I thought, ideally, I would like to add, well, subject to your rights of early termination as set forth in the contract, you might remember, if they failed to do some things, you had a right of early termination. And so I thought maybe we add that. But then above, it does say that this agreement does not operate as a waiver or release of any rights of the town under the terms and conditions. That probably protects you, because it was a right you have under that, but if you wanted to really be safe, I would add the words, or early termination pursuant to the terms of the contract. So it's how lawyer-ary do you want to do that?
I'm okay with it.
You're okay with it, yes? Because I, I think you still have a right. It's only, it would only probably affect if you, I mean, you could only do it at the end of the year, so it would only be, if you terminated it early, it'd be the end of 2025, you only have five more months then afterwards, so it may be all right as is.
Did they say anything about a holiday schedule? It's just remaining the same?
Uh, yes, they only get, my understanding, I don't even think they get New Year's off, do they? My understanding, they get Thanksgiving and Christmas Day, and that's it. So the only one that currently affects us is Christmas, if it falls.
Extreme weather.
Oh, yeah, yeah, extreme weather. Yeah, because we had that last, the other day. And I will say that he contacted us in advance, because I hadn't thought about Trash Day, he contacted us in advance and said, hey, we are watching this coming, and so I will let you know on Sunday if this is something that's going to change. So communication is a lot better with them. If anyone needs a second tote, that's done the same way, it is at a lower rate, but it is, you pay for the whole year, you contact Rumpke, I can give, you can contact us and I'll give you the number. But everything else, if you're missing a tote or have complaints about missed trash or whatever, you still contact us.
Okay.
And you want to, when you do talk to them about having a, a date where they can pick up?
Yes, Big Trash Day.
Big Trash Day, so.
And I will see what I can find and get back with everybody on that.
Okay, perfect. I make a motion to accept Rumpke's consent to assignment.
Motion on the floor to accept the assignment, seconded by Jean. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I've got two more things that are not, not on the agenda. I just got our economic development income tax certification. We used to have to do a two-year edit plan, letting the county know what we planned to do with a portion of our edit funds. Then they discontinued that, and that law went back into effect, so we have to do that again. So this is my recommendations. We only have to do a quarter of it, but I've put out for half of it anyway. Park improvements, street and ADA improvements, which would be paving and that kind of stuff, and cemetery improvements.
And it's changeable all the times. So it's kind of a strange law still, because they changed the law that you can use your edit money for any purpose, but they never changed it as far as still doing the capital improvement plan. See, it used to be it had to be used for capital improvement plan. Now it can be used for anything. So they took that out, but still require the plan. So it's kind of a silly still requirement, so you can submit it, but change it anytime soon.
Right. And the other things that we do with our money that, you know, I did not put on here is safety, because placing fire is also paid out of edit, so.
And it, it actually comes from the town's executives, so it'll be your president, council group.
It has to be president, okay.
So the town executive actually gets it.
Okay, but we can still.
Yeah.
Approve it.
And you can sign it later?
Yeah.
Okay. Good with that?
Yes.
Need a motion on the floor to accept the.
The two-year economic development income tax certification plan.
Okay. Jean, Jean made the motion, you're second.
I'll second.
Anywhere for second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The other thing that we have is our legal services agreement with our attorney.
If you want me for another year, if you don't, I believe we can talk about it.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve Bob's contract.
Motion on the floor to accept Bob's contract for another year. Second, Jean Gavin seconded it. Any discussion before we vote? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody have anything to do or bad, or?
I just have one suggestion. If it would be, if nobody would have a problem, if Dublin would be able to shuffle by the post office in front of Pats because she can't, and it's high traffic, icy, slippery, I don't want it coming across as any kind of special treatment, but I feel that everybody uses that area, and I don't want anybody to fall.
Okay.
So if Lenny's okay with that, just keeping an eye on that little, I mean, that's, that little tiny strip.
Yeah.
And you know my, you know my obsession with, with snow and that. When we're, we're cleaning the sidewalks, so when we come back and we're cleaning the streets, we can't pack up the entrance into the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, please. That's what, that was the other thing I noticed on this side, I was like, oh, they can't go anywhere once they get there. So, yeah, please.
Anything else, anyone? Okay, raises down to the claims. Any questions? I see you had the heater working at the wellhouse, was that in the corner room? The heater?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, I never had it fixed when it, when it kicked on and it stayed on, it followed everything.
Oh, you didn't fix it? Okay.
Didn't get it fixed, all right, so I had to have that done before, but.
Yeah. Make a motion to accept claims?
Motion to accept claims.
Jean made a motion, second?
Second.
Seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, raises down for our financial. Any questions? Concerns? Motion made by Jean, the executive, second?
Second.
Anywhere for seconded it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, anything else?
Motion made, your turn.
Second.
Second, all say it?
Aye.
Motion carries.